Well, call this meeting ordered is ten o'clock and thank you everybody for coming out today. First off, we will stand and do the pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by Mr. Larry Prince.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the blessings that we enjoy. Lord, we thank you for this season and the celebration and it's based on hope. Let us continue to pray for hope for our citizens, hope for what we do, actions and the actions that we take. Pray, Lord, that we do it with an open heart and with clear conscience and we do it for the good of all. Guide and direct us in these meetings and future and keep us safe through the holiday season, Christ sakes on him.
Commissioner Prince? If it's okay with my fellow commissioners, I'd like to take a minute or two and just make a comment or two if nobody has any objection.
Objection, sir.
I would like to thank my fellow commissioners for putting this trust, putting their trust in me to the chair of this board. I will do my best to fulfill the duties and have the county in my best interest. Our goal as commissioners is to do what is best for the county and the citizens of Allegheny County. I believe we as commissioners owe it to the citizens to set a tone and professionalism and patience as well as respect as we move forward. My goal is to move forward, not focus on the past. We need to move forward and make our country, our county, which we live, would want to move here and make it their home. The future of our county depends on everyone working together and watch the progress grow. We welcome our new county manager. We will be, have challenges. We will, we know challenges will be great, but together we can get through them. Looking forward to having a good and successful year. Thank you. Moving on into the public agenda comment. Does anybody have any comments?
I believe we need to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Back up here, we need to approve the agenda. Do you hear a motion?
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Motion of second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Need to approve the minutes for the 12:02 meeting and 12:06 meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the December the 2nd and December the 6th.
Second.
Minutes. Although I do have a question, since I was present electronically, I may not be able to make that motion for the December the 6th. Attorney is...
I think you still can.
Based on recommendation of the acting county manager, I make, I confirm my motion, sir.
Motion of second and discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A point of order. On the agenda, we do have a closed session for legal and our attorney isn't present at this time. Are we expecting her to be here?
Pardon?
Are we expecting our attorney to be here?
Hopefully, hopefully.
If not, what is our?
If she's not here, I suggest not doing the closed session.
Okay.
It stays on the agenda pending what Donald.
Pending if she makes it, right. Okay. Any other movement, changes to the agenda? You can send agenda. Everybody good with that?
No comments?
No comments? A motion on there? Need a motion on a consent agenda and the agenda for the two, pending Donna arriving to have the closed session. Hear a motion?
We voted on the agenda and approved it. I believe if we get to, whenever we get to the closed session, if Donna is not here, that we would have to suspend that or table it until the county attorney is available.
Okay. All right, moving on to public comment. Anyone wishes to comment, that'd be a good time. Seeing no movement, we'll move on to the presentation of the board. Member of Commerce Spotlight, Blue Ridge Santa, Sam and Julia Simmons.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'd like to start out by introducing our newest chamber member. It's Enviro Shred and they're out of Hickory. It's a document shredding company and they serve Northwest North Carolina. And I'd like to set up a time with them in the spring to come up for any businesses who have a large amount of documents that need shredding. So be on the lookout for that. Before I introduce the spotlight business, I want to point out that we're selling ads for the 2020 Allegheny County Magazine. This is what it looked like last year and this is a great marketing tool for the county as we pass this out to all official North Carolina Welcome Centers across the state. We pass it out to all surrounding counties, Welcome Centers and Chamber of Commerce. And we do get plenty of calls asking for more magazines. So if anyone's interested in purchasing an ad and didn't have one last year, just give myself a call or Vicki at the chamber and we'll be glad to get you set up. Business after hours tomorrow at the Allegheny Inn from 5:00 to 6:30 and anyone's welcome to attend this event. It's not just for chamber members. This morning's spotlight business is Blue Ridge Santa and they are here this morning to tell you a little more about what they do.
Thank you. On the inside, she's prettier and more people see her. Greetings from the North Pole to all of you. I am Sa- I am Blue Ridge Santa and then when I head further north, I am the jolly old elf Santa himself. And may I introduce Mrs. Claus.
Morning. I'm, I'm Mrs. Claus and we're here to tell you today about our work as Santa and Mrs. Claus. We bring oop and happiness and smiles. I can tell you that everywhere we go, we bring smiles. There's not too many people that don't smile when they see us and we hope kindly, so, yeah.
And as we travel, we happen to mention that we have a little stopping place in Ennis, North Carolina, near Sparta and that it's a beautiful area with very kind, kind and happy people and very, very excited and happy children. So we love to, I guess you could even say brag about this wonderful area to the children and the families of, anywhere we go. And we go places.
We go far.
Been as far south this, this year as Charlotte, as far east as High Point and a little east of there and as far north as Abington where we found a really nice organization there to have brunch with. Now anytime you put food on the table, you know Santa wants to be there. So we were very happy to be there. So we go all in the northwest area of North Carolina.
Beach Mountain is next weekend.
Coming up. I, I don't ski, but with these boots that I have on, I'll probably be able to snowboard. We are always enjoying opportunities to make children happy and let them feel important. Such an, such a kindly way.
Take time to listen to the children and sometimes they ask for gifts. Sometimes they ask for their family to be happy or their father to come back home or their grandmother to be cured of cancer. Sometimes they ask for ITools or books, I, yeah, or books or art supplies.
When they mention reading or art, which is interesting because when we are around this area in the community, we do things as Sam and Julia Simmons. I am a volunteer tutor in the public schools chiefly right now Sparta Elementary, but I'm sure I will be asked to go to the other elementary schools in this area where I work mainly in the first grade, also the fourth grade, to help enhance the learning of English and also the comprehension of what they are reading. That happens to be my life for ten and a half months of every year, barring summer vacation, of course, and it's a, it's a wonderful dedicated effort that I make there and am accepted for that.
And I work with Suicide Prevention and Allegheny Lives with the Allegheny County Ministerium, helping churches work together to be the hands and feet of Jesus and I work with Mountain Homespun Fiber Guild. So those are some of the things that we enjoy as a community. One more thing that I, two more things I wanted to mention about being Santa and Mrs. Claus. Last weekend, we visited over at Camp New Hope in Glendale Springs, which is a camp for terminally ill children and their families and we visited a very brave and loving, loving, loving little boy, 10 years old. They said, "Well, can we wait and bring him to Camp New Hope in the spring?" They asked the hospice nurse and the hospice nurse said, "No, he won't be here." And he, I wish you all, I wish we could have bottled it and just brought him here. It was such an inspiration.
He's, he is such a sweet little fella, very, has Jesus at his heart, very dedicated to that and, and being the less, best little boy he can be. And there is no way that he was on the naughty list. Now there may be a county commissioner or two.
We're not going to point to anybody.
All of you are on the nice list.
For the service that you give, we thank you.
And as Santa and Mrs., we appreciate your dedication. Thank you for that.
We are able to give everything that we take in to feed and clothe children in the community, to Camp New Hope and for art and music supplies in the public school system. So we're very blessed. This has become a mission. We make home store, home visits. We tell the story of Jesus' birth and some specifics. We're going to be at the Santa Hut at the farmer's market on December the 19th, 20th and 22nd, not the 21st, from 2:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon for people to come and make pictures. It's very nice inside there. Visit with Santa and Mrs. Claus, make pictures, be with their family.
All of that for free, a service of a committee that Mrs. Claus and I have been asked to act as consultants for and that is the Sparta Lights and Entertainment Committee. So if you know where the Santa Hut is, it's right next to the farmer's market at Kraus Park and if you care to tell children of all ages to come in and sit with Santa and Mrs. from 2:00 until 5:00, the 19th, 20th and 22nd. And then we are heading back to the North Pole for a long winter's nap.
And we would like to conclude with a proclamation.
Should I start?
You start, Santa.
Okay. Whereas we reflect on our gratitude for family, health, friendship and kindness and...
Whereas we humbly acknowledge what giving and generosity can do.
Whereas, I like the whereas. Doesn't that sound like a commissioner's meaning? And whereas we celebrate the joy of helping and charitable giving. We therefore express our hopes for continuing this spirit all year long. May the joy of the season fill your hearts with love and may you show this love throughout the season and evermore. Merry Christmas.
And thank you.
Thank you all. Y'all's work is really appreciated. I will move into the general business. First up is Josh Green, Public Works Director.
So I had in the packet today for the approval, some bids for the roofing and the siding at the new Council on Aging Building and over last week's time period and on into this morning, I've learned some new information and back whenever the county was discussing with the Wellness Center of whether this piece of property was going to be deeded or leased and that time up until the deed or the lease was signed, I thought that the piece of property was going to be dated. So what this does to us is Allegheny County cannot be the general contractor of that building because we do not own the land. Frank Dealer pulled the general construction permit to start the project. He'll have that permit until the job is finished. So with these two bids, I'm gonna have to do a little change in the way it's worded on the agenda that there won't be an approval today of either one of these bids. It'll be for Frank Dealer to do. Now with that being said, I spoke to Frank this morning and we can accept recommendations. Frank and I both know that we're going to do what's in the best interest of Allegheny County. Frank's always been good to help us in any way that he can so, you know, and I can help Frank with taking bids whenever it goes on into the sheet rock and in the insulation part of it. Now whenever it comes to the wiring and the heating and cooling, they'll be licensed contractor. Allegheny County can accept those bids. So I just wanted to come on in and tell you and give you a little explanation of why Allegheny County wouldn't be approving either one of these bids today. It'll, it'll go back to Frank Dealer.
So we need no action.
Need no action.
Legal matters, there's no choice.
I think at one time, we thought that the Wellness Center was going to deed the property to the land instead of leasing it. Figure that it was going to cost us more than $20,000 because of what the Wellness Center did. Was that a true figure? You said around $22,000, be spent more.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's going to cost us more now having to do it this way than it would have been if Allegheny County would have been the general contractor.
Over the years, Allegheny County has given the Wellness Center over $700,000 and they would not deed that piece of property to the county, which in the long term costs the county more money. I, I just think that needs to be, I want that in the record also.
Any further comments? Discussion?
I would ask, did we, we ask for it to be deeded? I mean, how did it end up the way it's ended?
Previous county manager, the discussions that I had with him the entire time all that process was going on, it was being told to me that it was going to be deeded to Allegheny County. I was preparing the budget. I was preparing the budget, I was preparing everything for that to be Allegheny County's property.
When did it change?
The only thing I can tell you is what I know and where I was involved with it, and I found out that it was going to be leased the day that it was approved here, after it was approved.
I think that the Wellness Center's attorney made several different changes.
There was a lot of changes made.
Without our attorney being involved in those changes. That's what wound up costing the county more money.
These are factors that we can certainly take into consideration during the budget process.
I remember that conversation too, back on early. We thought we was getting a deed. We talked about that from the very, very beginning, to put the building up, they deeded us the land.
Right.
Everything got changed around midstream under previous manager, but we'll take all that into consideration. Any further discussion? Questions for Josh?
Donna looked at the reason that they rejected the beating?
I just, I had, I asked a lot of questions to Donna whenever that was going through after the process. And if you remember correctly, if my memory serves me right, I think it was tabled at one meeting, and then went to the next one. In between that table, and is when I actually sent a list of questions to Donna myself, just the kind of things that just kind of stood out to me. And, you know, she said that's, if that's how it went, that's how it would be voted on, so.
That's just one more reason the county attorney needs to be involved in everything the county really does financially.
At that time, I don't think that she had a lot, she was just kind of gave a piece of paper and said, "Here, make us a contract," so to speak. And, you know, I had some pretty good conversations with Donna myself on that, and that's where it ended up at.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we table this and have Donna talk to us and get back involved in this.
Does tabling it slow down the production or the finish date?
I need, I need to get a roof on it as soon as possible. The titanium paper that was used to dry it in by Frank Dillard, with the way the wind blows over there, I don't want to have to start adding cost to it. Now, as far as the siding, sidinging side of it, we can table that. I would love to get the roof on it, and both the guys that did turn these bids in told me they would start right away on the roof.
If we can vote on nothing but the roof today, that'll speed up the project?
Well, really, really won't be.
Well, it'll save us some money potentially, you have some bad trouble.
Right.
Chairman, just on this initial comments, we're really not in the position of authority because of how this is going to have to be bid now through the general. Don't really need action from us. Us tabling this today isn't going to take it away from the general. We may want to consider, continue our conversation with legal as to some of the backstory to this.
And that could save us for the future.
To help us, because we have talked about some of what Donna did, didn't do, did say, didn't say, and her not here. That is not healthy, so.
You're not recommended to table.
Frank Dillard, as the general contractor, can award the bid, get it going.
Yes.
So, if time is of the essence, you need to convey that to the general contractor. We'll cuss and discuss about how we ended up in this situation with the county attorney.
On a side note, Megan and I have had some conversations, and I was just wanting to get some clarification up at the Lions Club Pavilion. Those, I've been meeting with some people up there, and the poplar trees that's all around that facility are dangerous. They're dying in the top, the old term widow makers, I mean, they're everywhere. I'd like to put into perspective here in the very near future of looking at timbering that out, because it's getting, the trees are dying in the center, so that they're losing value every day, but also the liability issues of limbs falling out of the trees at all times and children's up there and everything. I don't know if that's something...
You need authorization from us to put it out for bids?
It's, you know, and it, does that officially belong to the county? Do we need to talk to the Lions Club about it? I don't know how all that goes. I just, I don't want to, in a sense, mess anything up there, but I feel like that after being up there and looking around and stuff, that something needs to be done.
Megan is available in the audience. Megan, do you know if the county owns that property?
I do have a... Along with some of that to y'all, if that helps.
Allegheny County Recreation Commission owns Davis Field, the Lions Club Pavilion, and the pool. We only deeded the tennis court to the school in 2019. If we have a hazard to the public, I believe that we need to take action today and authorize the taking of bids and getting those things down. I'd hate to be sued because we now have warning that we have a public danger.
Are you going to have to get somebody to take them down, or are you all going to?
We'll have to. The few I've talked to about it, talking sixty, forty, split.
Sixty, four...
Forty, Allegheny County, sixty to the guy, the person, people that'll be doing it'll get sixty percent, but that's their time, their equipment, their haul and everything. We won't have to touch anything.
And assuming the liability.
And assuming the liability.
Mr. Chairman?
Usually fifty, fifty?
No, not normally.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A point of information, according to our rules, shouldn't we be addressing the chairman for permission at these meetings?
If we're going to start that, I want to keep it going. Never done it before. Amen to that.
It's a pleasure of the board, it would be good to do that, so.
It's in the procedure manual that you will grant permission to whoever has a question to ask.
It is, and it is in the rules and regulations, it is.
Have a question.
Sir, Commissioner.
On the split, I've sold a lot of timber in the last few years, and it's always been fifty, fifty. Now, that's with Independence Lumber. I don't know who you're dealing with, but I just want to be sure we get the best price for the county, whether it's somebody doing it in the county or somebody doing it. And will they clean up the mess, or are they just going to cut the timber and leave the laps laying?
The few that I spoke with so far is cleaning up the mess.
They'll clean everything up. That makes the difference.
Now, with that being said, that's not stumps included, the stumps will still be there.
They'll cut the stumps low to the ground.
It's still the ten percent, basically, I mean, fifty, fifty, sixty, forty, clean up.
They're cleaning up brush.
Mr. Chairman, on this email, I would actually draw attention to Davis Field. It says the Recreation Commission owns Davis Field. I would say most of Davis Field, but there's actually a corner of that field property. Confirmation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
In the, in the entire deed that deals with the Lions Club Pavilion, the Davis Field and everything, in the roughly fifty, sixty acres in that, in that tract, and there's two different tracts, one small piece over on Independence Road, which is less than a half an acre or something. I think Drew's going to try to pull it up. The Davis Field, doesn't that come into play because of a grant that we received years ago? Is there some problem with the deed?
I believe, I believe Megan would have to answer that. Mr. Chairman, I don't think Josh has that information.
Megan, you want to step up, and you have an answer for that?
Maybe I'll get your first name correct as soon as I get your last.
Just, I went and spoke with Donna on Friday, and she said that there had been previous conversation between the school and the county about who owned what in all that whole upper part, and that because the Davis Field was purchased and it's there with part of money, that we can actually not do anything with that field, we cannot ever get rid of it. It has to stay in the Recreation Department because it was paid for with the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant. The only thing it can ever be is a ball field. It can, it can't change from that, and it can't be signed over to anyone else, whether we maintain it or not. It just, it has to stay our property because of it being paid for with that grant.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's two questions there, if you don't mind, I mean, two parts to that. If you don't...
Good, Commissioner.
There's, there's a county-owned portion of that field that the part-of-grant applied to. What you just stated, I think I agree with, that in order for us not to lose or that to be clawed back, we would have to maintain the use. There's part of that field that county, that doesn't not apply to because the school owns that. A small corner of that field down the, I think, first base line is...
The entire, you don't quite have the entire blow-up of all the land that goes up Sam Brown's mountain, but that goes from the road that goes to Lions Club Pavilion all the way over to Independence Road. And that little sliver of land is there on the right-hand side by Independence. All of that that you're looking at now belongs to the, belongs to Allegheny County, to the people of the county. There's a lot of land in there that can be used. There's that little sliver over there below Brian Edwards' house, I believe, someplace in there.
Can somebody take their marker and knows where that line is for the school and the county and point that out up there? Right along that line?
May, what's the question? What's the problem?
The school owns part of that, county owns part of it, we can't.
We can still make it into two fields, can't we? The grant said as long as it stays for recreation, baseball, football, whatever.
Yes, and I spoke to Phil True from High Country Council, and he said that as long as we're expanding it for the same purpose, that it's fine. We can't, you know, tear it down and put a splash pad there, it's got to stay a ball field. As long as we're expanding it for the same reasons, there's no issue. They just will not give us any more funds to do so.
Have you gotten that in writing, or is that a verbal conversation?
He was here, I may have that in an email as well. If not, I could get him to send that to me, because...
I just think for Donna's inmate, for her records, we need to have something in writing from that group.
Okay.
So, I'm, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Assuming there's a problem with the school?
I believe so.
What's the problem?
I don't want to speak for Mr. Beasley, I know he's on the agenda, so the field, if we change it from one field to two fields, the middle school, it will not be regulation for middle school baseball to play their games on unless we can find some more field space and can do a 275, is that correct, seventy-five?
Seventy-five.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I defer until Mr. Beasley speaks with the board, while I have a feeling we're going to be discussing this in detail.
He's coming up on the agenda to address the footage and so forth.
Josh, I'd recommend, Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend that Mr. Green stays around. He may be involved in future discussions.
Hang around a few minutes.
Can I get yours permission to start getting bids for the timbering of...
Yes, sir.
Lions Club.
Withdraw my motion.
Get a motion for the...
To cut the trees, I would make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
A motion, second and further discussion.
What was the motion exactly?
Cut the trees.
Was to seek bids?
And seek bids for them.
And then that information would come back to us for another discussion.
Before it gets approved.
Right. The thing I got to say, it's a bad time to sell timber because it's pretty cheap. It's way off the market, what it used to be. But that's the way the times is right now, so, pretty dangerous, we need to go ahead and...
They're dying, ain't they?
Yeah, they do.
Next high wind, if it takes the roof out or something like that, yeah.
We've got a motion, a second, to receive bids on the cutting of the timber and bring the bids back. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I vote.
Thank you.
Keep... Timmy Lucas, Corporate Extension.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here. Carmen Long, our Family Consumer Science Agent, was a national award winner. She won state and then was sent on to the national level and attended a conference in Hershey, Pennsylvania, September into October. I am here today to ask permission to reimburse her for those expenses. It was an oversight on our department's fault to come and ask permission for her to travel prior. So, that cost was split, the money is already in our budget, we are not asking for additional funds, it's just for permission to reimburse her for $391.46.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I vote.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Next up is Jaclyn Eisner.
Good morning. Good morning, ma'am. Thank you all for letting me come today and talk to you just very briefly, I'll try and be very respectful of your time. I work with an agency called Vocational Rehabilitation, Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. And, thank you. I think Drew has some of my cards she could pass out to you. We are a division under the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. The charge of our division is to work with individuals who have disabilities and helping them find employment. I personally am the counselor for youth ages fourteen, fifteen, to about twenty-five years old in the counties of Allegheny, Ash, and Watauga. And I help those students find, decide what they want to do, and if they know, decide them, watch them change their mind fifteen times, but help them figure out what they want to do, and then help them do that. Briefly, a disability, let me describe it, because when I go to people and say what I do, they're like, "Well, how can some of these people work?" A lot of times, people will picture in their mind a person with a disability, someone in a wheelchair, someone who's blind, someone who has Down Syndrome, which all of those are the case, and all of those individuals can work many times. But I can work with individuals and do work with individuals with disabilities, such as learning disability, in reading and math, something very, very minimal. So, it's, it's a whole spectrum of things that, issues that they might encounter. I work a lot with Dr. Beasley at the school, I'm at Allegheny High School every Monday and work with students there. We have a variety of services, career exploration, vocational evaluations, but the one I'm here to talk to you about today is an internship. It's a paid internship. And I first broached Josh and Drew and Linda Edwards about a specific young man at the high school and doing a paid internship. Vocational Rehabilitation has the ability to pay for interns in an area that they say they're interested in. Again, these are high school kids, so what they say and what they mean sometimes aren't exactly the same, but at least they're thinking. And so, we can pay for internships, we supply the money, therefore, that individual is an employee of Vocational Rehabilitation, which then means that the liability is on us. I think on page eleven and twelve, you have the two pieces of paper that the county would sign, which is an agreement, and the other one you don't sign, you just have the insurance company that would cover the person. We presently have an intern actually at the bus garage, the school bus garage, and he's been working there for several months. But basically, what it allows my students to have is some experience in whether they want to do something or whether they don't want to do something. In my, I'm a special education teacher by training, and I think that... In my, I'm a special education teacher by training, and I think that learning either what you want to do or don't want to do, I think both of them are equally positive. So, it gives my young men and young women an opportunity to see what the job is actually like, to be taught by people who are doing that job. Now, obviously, they're not going to do the exact same thing. The young man at the bus garage is cleaning the bus. He's not fixing the motor, so we don't have to worry about that. But it does, it does give them opportunity to decide whether they want to do something like that. Again, Vocational Rehabilitation supplies the money. We can work with these individuals for up to 21 hours a week, a seven-day week, up to four months. And termination of this occurs at any time. Now, I'll be quite frank with you, as I was with Linda and Drew. I don't put kids out there that I know aren't going to do anything, because I know what they're going to do in town, because I see what they do in school. So, if it's all they can do to show up to school, then I know they're not going to show up to work. So, those aren't the kids that I would ask to do those kinds of internships. The one specifically that I'm talking about, we would like to have working at the EMS some of the time, much of the time, as much as he can, and then perhaps for Josh or other county offices as well. He's a young man that's graduating in December, and, you know, I mean, he's been in high school, so he hasn't done anything a lot. I mean, so I think that anything he could learn would be positive. If I can answer any questions, I would be happy to. I'm sorry, I can't go in specifics about the young man because of confidentiality, but I could, but we certainly would do that if this was agreed upon by all of you. The person would meet with Drew and with Linda and with Josh personally, so that they can have kind of a brief interview as well. I mean, I'm not going to stick somebody somewhere and you've never met him before. So, if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Chairman, I'm satisfied, and we'll make a motion of approval.
A motion of approval. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you so much.
For to do great things.
You have a good day.
Communities and Schools funding request up next.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and county commissioners. I am Glendore Yarborough with Communities and Schools, and I sent you a packet, an update of where we are, and just wanted to come before you this morning and bring that request to you.
Mr. Chairman. So, according to the spreadsheet, the needed number, 39,900, is that, I guess that assumes or includes the Allegheny Cares?
Sir.
That they have basically allocated but are waiting to, in those-
They, they request-
Tension upon?
Yes, upon us getting businesses involved with financial support. And so, we sent a letter out, I believe it was late September, early October, to the businesses of the employers who were, the parents who were involved with our after-school program. And we have gotten one $500 check-in that you don't see there from Susan Up Church, and we have a $500 pledge from Allegheny Inn from that, from that request. So, I did email Allegheny Cares last week and say, how much financial backing are you, would you like to see before you, you know, let go of those fundings? And I haven't heard from them.
I think, you know, this is something that we lost our after-school program. Have it sometimes funded, then some years we don't. Creates a real stress on our working population, parents, the children. And I know these are, these programs and things are touching these lives in ways that the school does everything it can with everything it gets, but they're limited as to what they can do. They are partnering with this program to support it through their facilities. I think even some schools that are shared in it, some program from the schools are helping it. And I think this is one significant area that our community is challenged in, and the program that I'm on board that has a lot of impact to our children, our youth, and their parents being able to stay gainfully employed.
So, we've kept up our end of the, what we said we would do, our responsibilities, and we have partnered with Allegheny Schools, and they have been gracious to let us, let us have space and to donate the snacks. And they're up and running in all three schools, and they're at capacity.
I've had some feedback too on the, on the fee. There is a small fee for, to some folks that have said they would gladly, gladly give more. So, I think opening it up, this opportunity, will actually see more support from individuals who really benefiting financially from it by being able to utilize it. And I would hope that this board would really consider being this big need in our community.
We would appreciate that.
I think it's a great program. I think it's very well needed. Funds are tight. In my opinion, I think the parents should be paying more. $10, was it $10 a week they pay now?
Sir.
Don't think you could get, you know, a day's daycare for that. So, I think that really needs to be looked at again.
Take that into consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Prince. Commissioner Irvin.
Back to one of your, I guess, your first spreadsheet. One that was in our package was 39,000. I believe the actual one is $44,487. This one that you showed me a minute ago. This, I have no problem with the, with the program. I've said that at the last, I think, the last two times that this request has been made. To me, this request needs to come through our budget. We start our budget process in the next few months. That's when this needs to be addressed. Got a large amount of money, you know, in your spreadsheet, individual donors, 25,000. Warren Gap, 50,000. JCP, 7,000. Earl Up Church, 500. Allegheny Inn, 500. There's another one from JCPC for 7,700. Allegheny Cares, I understand, is around 30,000 to 40,000 dollars. The total budget is 168,562 dollars. And that, right now, is, I believe, you're servicing 56 students. Out of that, 168,000.
The after-school program. There's also another component to this program that they, the site coordinators are there during the school day, so they're serving other students. Just with the after-school program, there's 56 students. But there's another component to the program where they're in the school during the school day, serving a number of students.
Out of this 168,000, if you look at the 56 students, which your program, which your spreadsheet shows us, that, let's see, we've got 13 students at Glade Creek, and 20 at Potted Creek, and 23 at Sparta Elementary. That's a total of 56 students. Looking at 168,000 dollars in your budget. If my math comes out right, it's a little over $3,000 per student based on those 56 students.
Per year.
I don't know what the school system's paying, what the state and local, what we spend on a student, per student, but I don't believe, I'm not sure. I'd have to know if it's in excess of 3,000. Here's a, we've got 56 students getting $3,000 versus our 1,400 or 1,500 students, and your per pupil price is, what, 35, 4,000, something in that range? I mean, I just, I support the program, but I think that the community can raise the money. They've already shown that they've raised 80 over, right at $100,000 instead of the taxpayers. This is a charitable organization. The county is very charitable when it comes to programs, especially helping children and helping individuals in education. Been reminded several times to err on the part of the children, and I don't forget that. But I think this is a program that the county needs to let the people that give charitably to this program support it. And I would ask, I don't know if you're here today to ask for money, but if you are, I would ask it to be tabled until the budget process takes place.
I think our initial intent was for the whole community to come together. Our name is Communities and Schools, and we bring the community into the school. And so, I think our whole intent was for the community to see the county commissioners given, their given, Communities and Schools has given, the Allegheny County Schools are giving. So, it was a whole community effort. And I think that was the initial reason that we came to the county commissioners in the very beginning.
No, that, you know, I enjoy, you know, hearing that, and that makes very much sense. But I go back to amount 168,000 to run this program, and I believe you have three, maybe three and a half full-time employees?
We have four.
Four full-time employees.
And one part-time.
I think your report just lists three right now.
But I think that Amanda wouldn't be listed on there. She, Amanda McCarn is the program director.
Yeah. You've got one school, you've got one employee handling 20 students. At another school, you've got one employee handling 13 students, and at another school, you have 23 handled by one, plus the coordinator.
Yes.
Just the coordinator doesn't show up on your report.
Yes. And per Mr. Beasley's request, he wanted it to be one coordinator, one adult per 15 students. So, you're going to see that ratio there too as well.
And I would, there, again, with the community supporting this program, I would think that the school system would be able to financially support part of it also.
Sir, anybody else have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would comment a little bit more on this. This, the Communities and Schools, I think, bring to the table with this program beyond maybe what you're seeing on a number of students is the impact to the homes of those students. That's the in-school help that's being delivered and administered to some of these kids that otherwise wouldn't get the extra attention that they are. With Communities and Schools, they actually, I think this first year is very critical, very, very critical that they be successful, and they will, I think, bring some help to the table in future, funding for future years with grants. I know they have a staff that has been successful with that in other counties where they are. And so, I really think that we should do everything we can to help support them. And with that, at this time, I want to make a motion that we allocate at least $20,000 at this time to help our part from the county in this community effort, and that we continue to monitor this and keep information flow back and forth so that, because I, I mean, you know, it would be ideal to have it at our budget year, but I mean, what do you do with funding until you get to the, our budget is July 1? So, I want to do everything we can to, we can get you there, and then hopefully, we can help propel you forwards from there to keep files on some of these kids, otherwise you might not get what they need, they need it.
Address the grant, the grant part that you talked about. We, our national office has, has a new focus and a new initiative to fund rural communities, so much so that they are almost willing to change their, their model to fit that, because they have realized that across the United States, there's a lot of communities that are rural communities that they're not tapping into because of resources. And so, they just had a meeting with us to say they're going to be rolling out a grant for Communities and Schools affiliates, that's what we're called, who expand or work into rural communities. And they specifically named Communities and Schools of Northwest North Carolina in their presentation. So, we're hopeful, and we want you to know that we're going to continue writing grants and looking for funding. That, you know, it's always risky, and there's always doubt and uncertainty, but we're always going to do our part in looking for funding, always.
One important element of grant writing is if, is if local leadership isn't seen as being in favor of the program by their support, it creates a-
Does.
A higher mountain or hurdle to get over by receiving those future.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Mr. Chair, I have some comments.
Okay.
You know, one of the problems that I have personally, whenever I look at this, you're coming to us in mid-budget. We're mid-year. Right now, we know that basically our cash flow is at a low point. Hopefully, we will have revenue coming in because it's coming up the first of the year and the property taxes are due. But this is something that our budget is so tight that it may seem like a small amount of money to other counties, but to this county, it's, it's quite a bit for us. Also facing us is now have EMD, Emergency Medical Dispatches confronting us. We're looking at basically a half a million dollar in personnel costs. That's three cents on the, on the hundred for expenses coming up, and we just raised taxes last year. I support it. I like, I've always supported, and this county has supported the educational endeavors and everything that we could do to help our young people. However, our taxpayers are pretty well tapped out because it's majority, we're, as I keep on saying, we are told that we are the largest per capita of 65 and older, which means fixed incomes. At Hertz, you had one community member said, it's just $38 if you support someone that's on Social Security. I would love to be able to do this, but I don't think that we are financially able to do it out of this budget year. Hopefully, we can stretch it in the next budget year, but I certainly can't support it knowing what we have in front of us and the bottom line that the county faces at this time. Yield my time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's money that will be left in the budget for jail food. That should be enough to cover this. So, that's the reason I second and support the program.
We've got one more comment, and Commissioner Irvin.
I look at our contingency fund started out at $50,000 this year. Now, we're down to around $500, someplace in that range. Is that correct?
That's right.
I mean, we've already spent $49,000-plus dollars on contingency programs. This would have to come out of our general fund, which we are already in financial straits if you look at where the state wants us to be and where we are. You've come to us with an overspecific request for an actual amount of money. This $20,000 is just brought up out of the air. I, again, think that this program is useful. I believe if the school system feels it's that useful, they can find $20,000 to support the program. But I also- But I also believe the others charities in the county that can come up with that additional forty, or $20,000. I would, I would like this program to be put off-table until we start our budget for next year. That's what, if we start giving away 20,000 to every person who comes in here, we are going to be taken over by the state possibly. That's where I'm coming from. I support the program, but let's look at it on down the road in the next budget.
Commissioner Irvin, I think all the commissioners here's hearts in the right place. Y'all want to do for our kids, it's just, as some of them has touched base on, we've got to get our own house in order a little bit, and we've got some major, major expense coming up. There, how quick do you have to have an answer? Let me ask it. How, how soon do you have to have an answer on this money? Day is, is
By the end of the, by December 31st.
December 31st. We've got a work session coming up. Too, we kind of like to see, I think the $10 a week is very reasonable. I think there's room to improve that, like Commissioner Prince says, and hopefully maybe the school could kick in some money, and we could split this 40,000 up some, you know, to help us all out, keep that program moving forward. Because it is a good, a good program. I know Surveille and Pownee Creek area that's used that, my family's used it. When people's working, they, they still got kids, it's got to be looked after to let them pick them up, you know? And it's, and they get more teaching done and stuff, tutoring in that, that timeframe. I guess my question would be, could we put that on the, the work session agenda?
Mr. Chairman, the motion was just for 20, which would leave the space for all of those others to come to the table and for folks to step up and contribute more if they want to, so.
Let Drew get it up there.
Have a motion and a second.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Commissioner Prince. Last week, Commissioner Prince had asked that I do some research on the jail meals because our contract price did change. So I just have to do a rough guesstimate because we never know how many inmates we will have. So I took last year's amount, just rough figures versus this year's new contract price, and we will have a savings of around $35,000 based on the same number of inmates we had last year for this year, and we don't know if that's going to be accurate or not. So I just wanted to give the board that little tidbit of information. You know, the finance officer's comfort level will be somewhere around, you know, the 25 to 30 range to give us a little bit of leeway. So I just would love to share that with you all, for you all to know that.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Welcome.
We've got a motion, we've got a motion and a second on the floor to support the $20,000. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Two to two. Business. Next on the agenda is compensation for the interim county manager.
Mr. Chairman, in pointing Drew as the interim county manager, I believe it is appropriate for this board to discuss a different level of compensation for that service. It is a, having been in there, it is a big undertaking, a task, meetings, time. I think people has done very well with it and will continue to do so in this interim. I believe we should at least consider a compensation increase during the timeframe. Actual amount from county manager compensation to what she is currently being compensated is like $800 a week.
Week?
Yeah. That's based on, I think, 40, I think I used 43,000 and 80,000 for manager's compensation. But she's not working at five, doing what she's doing. I think it's, we consider some help there.
They cited 700 and something a week?
Yeah, it's just a little over 700 a week.
What was yours, compensation per week? Net over 1,200?
I'm saying the difference from what she's being compensated now, her rate now versus the manager's rate, that's the difference between.
We just gave her a raise, not three or four weeks ago of, what, four or five? It changed some often, I forgot how much it was. And you recommended the raise, you should know.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I, I don't, I don't agree that we gave her a raise. We gave her a, a change based on a job change.
It's more money. She got more money.
Right.
Look at that as a raise.
But that money was based on the new job description. Now, we gave her an additional job description as a county manager. That additional job description and requirement, consider different compensation. It's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Irvin.
Ever we approved the change in job description, the job description was changed to assistant county manager with a pay increase, if I remember correctly, with benefits of $6,547. Now, this is a temporary position. She accepted the position and the pay increase, knowing that there was a possibility that she should, she could become the county manager temporarily. I think she's adequately compensated right now. Now, if she was going to become a, a temporary county manager, interim county manager, whatever term you want to use, for a prolonged period of time, I would entertain this, but we have a definite date of 13 January, if not before, that she will relinquish these duties. So I can't support this. I think she's adequately compensated. We also have the problem where the other county employees, I'm sure, are sitting back saying, boy, I wish I had the opportunity. Thank you.
Commissioner Irvin.
Okay. Question, did Drew ask for this raise?
No.
Did not ask for it. Now, I will say this, since she's been the assistant county manager, I've called on her several times, and in a very timely fashion, has she gotten back to me with the answer to the questions that I've asked. I think she's done an exceptional job at this point. She has not asked for this raise. I know we're in a giving away mood of money today, but
It's Christmas.
But I just, I know it's Christmas, but thank goodness there's not many other people here asking for money. Without her asking for the raise, I can't support it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Irvin, go ahead.
I will echo Bobby's comments. I think Drew's done a commendable experience. We've thrown her into the briar patch. She's acquitted herself very well. She has shown that our choice to modify her job description was a good one, but bottom line is bottom line. Thank you for your service.
I agree. Drew has really stepped up the plate and done a, done a great job, and I too have called on her several times, and she gets right to the point and gets, gets back to you.
I thought Larry.
Commissioner Prince.
Yeah, I'm neither Scrooge nor Santa Claus, but, you know, no, she didn't ask for it. We gave Mark money to serve as interim manager. Don't see how we could do it for one and not the other, but I'd have to ask those that made the motion to put her in that position, what their intent was, and is it clear of how her compensation will be when she does have to fill in?
That being said, any, any other discussion?
I would like to make one final comment.
Commissioner Prince.
It's, it's interesting that, that we've been such a stickler over job descriptions. And as they've changed, we've wanted to monitor those, and we have changed job descriptions without, basically in this situation, without a compensation. I, I would not characterize this as a raise. I would characterize it as a, an equitable pay for services rendered.
Any further comments?
Just like Sam, glad money grows on trees in Allegheny County.
Different trees. Different trees. I hear a motion? Okay. All right.
Dies for lack of motion.
Need to, had a motion and a second, we need to vote. Didn't have a motion. Dies for lack of motion?
Going on a satellite lease opportunity?
Mr. Chairman, I have only one question on this. Is this going to interfere with the welding shop?
I sent this email over to Donna. I, Mark and I received it, and I wasn't sure if it was legitimate or not. She said it seemed legitimate based on their website, but she wanted to get the board's opinion on whether they wanted any more information. So if you want her to dig into it a little bit, if it's even anything you're interested in.
I personally would be interested because it does bring in $500 a month to the county coffers, and I am familiar, not with the company, but I am familiar with the leasing, having worked for Amazon, uh, excuse me, in the cell phone industry, locations are prime, especially if you've got a tower. Believe it's a legitimate inquiry, and if it's bringing in income, I'm not going to turn it down. I don't think we are so rich that we can turn down an opportunity to bring something in. My only concern is, will it, will it impact the welding shop that we've been discussing over at Wilkes Community College?
Chairman.
Commissioner Irvin.
I did, I just wanted to elaborate. I did have a couple of phone conversations with this gentleman who called. He was out of Charlotte, came up and looked and didn't have a lot of detail, but basically indicated they would come and look for, I think, three spots in this region and was hoping to find one in Allegheny County, and would basically then present what they find and see if we would, interest of pursuing it. And it does state on there a distance from the X to, to lease the space for, I think it's 20 years, for a dish, for a satellite, or, I mean, for a location. Share that.
Commissioner Irvin.
I've talked to Dr. Cox a couple of times in the last few days. He, he sent a sketch of what, what the welding shop would be, based on that sketch and nothing else. I think Josh needs to have input in this. Assuming that X is the location, it would not interfere with the building that, that they're going to build. It's 30 by 40 or something like that, but I don't know the exact location of the welding shop, and I don't know the exact location of that X. I would be, I think we should definitely, it's a 21-year lease, that's 160-some thousand dollars over 21 years. But I think before anything's done, obviously Donna has to be involved, and I think Josh and the people at Wilkes Community have to be involved to be sure there's no underground electrical cables there that bothered us before, or any of the high-speed internet cables. But I think it's well worth looking at.
Well, now, it's going to be up to that company to make sure that there's no clear line of sight to the satellites that they're going to go through. They can shield it, but it's an opportunity to bring some funds in.
What's the actual size of the area right here?
I believe they said
It is very small.
25 by 28.
25 by 28. About five acres, that dollars per acre there.
Well.
Keep that picture.
Commissioner Irvin.
Just, just a side comment. While Josh is getting the trees hopefully cut at the Lions Club Pavilion, I would ask for him to look at those trees that go along the edge of the parking lot. Last, last summer in the big wind, we had one that came over and tore up one of the light poles. I don't know how much of that land we own, but while they're cutting those other poplar trees, they're, they're not that far away from cutting enough to keep the trees from falling on cars and on the light poles. Back to the, what we're talking about, I support looking at it further.
Thank you all, and consensus of checking this out further.
Chairman, I, on that, I'd make a motion to move forward with the due diligence for, for legal and location challenges and for any partners or anybody else that it might impact to be considered in the conversation.
Second that.
Got a motion and a second, move this project forward, investigate it and check it out. Any further questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Go. TDA board appointments, nominations. If, we're meeting two, two nominees, right?
Two spots open.
Amy Main's a current member, Shirley Richardson, a current member, Charlie Scott, a previous member, Jeff Smith, local businessman, and Sparked Lights and Entertainment. We need to open the floor for two nominees.
Chairman, a point of information, one of these would, hired to, of these positions needs to be someone who currently collects the TDA tax, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. One of these four does that.
There's, I think two on the list that would meet that requirement, which would be the first two.
What was that requirement, please?
It would need to be associated with collecting the TDA tax. You know, motel, bed and breakfast, uh,
Tax, right. Make a motion to nominate Shirley Richardson for one.
Nominate Jeff Smith.
We got, we got a motion for Shirley Richardson and Jeff Smith.
Actually, I spoke with Steve Mason, and he asked that we do these separately, one at a time, so we'll start with Shirley.
Okay, let's, let's.
Second that.
Got a motion, second for Shirley. Further discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Open the floor back up for the second nominee, which was Jeff Smith. Further discussion?
Second.
Second on Jeff Smith?
I nominated, I can't second, so.
I nominated, we need a second. Second, we need a second on Jeff Smith, on John's nomination.
Does he meet the qualifications for the taxes?
Would not.
There's only one, there's only one requirement.
Only need one to meet it.
Just one.
Shirley.
Got Shirley.
Anybody.
Yeah. I understand it.
They have to promote tourism in the county, which
Sparked Lights would certainly qualify.
How long's, how long's it for?
Three years.
Three years.
Only need one to meet it.
Just one.
Shirley.
Anybody.
Yeah. I understand it.
They have to promote tourism in the county, which.
Sparta Lights would certainly qualify.
How long is it for?
Three years.
Three years, I believe.
That's what it was.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose? Mr. Chad Beasley, Allegheny County Schools.
Drew, can I pull that plot of land back up that we had there before? If you want mine, please. Thank y'all for putting us on the agenda, it's late notice, but I didn't find out till late last week that Davis Field was getting ready to be torn up and turned into two fields. So I know the fence has already been taken down, but I find it hard to believe that we're taking a field that John Woodruff built a few years ago to serve not just Allegheny County Schools, but the community as well. If we had to replace that field somewhere else in this county, you're looking at spending well over $100,000. It has lights, it has restrooms, it has dugouts, it has the fence, it has a scoreboard. You will not be able to build that field, serve our students, especially for middle school baseball. Requirements for those fields do not qualify for what I understand is being built. I haven't seen the drawings of what's being built, and I don't know if you have technical drawings of what's being built. But if you look at that plot of land. Can you zoom in on where Davis Field is, Drew, please? Or just pull it down a little bit there? Okay. But anyway, the school's property line, as you can see, is the bottom blue, which actually right now, actually right now, as far as the restrooms go, that's on the, it's on the school's property, okay? That dugout down Third Baseline, half of it's on the school's property. The first base dugout's on the school's property. And then everything's standing out through there. So you guys have torn down already part of our property with the fence that's been taken down. And I'm not blaming people. I just, we haven't had any conversations with Coach Lyons, our AD at the high school. Nobody had a conversation with Coach Murphy, the AD down at the middle school. You know, we have to have certain requirements to practice and play. If we turn these two fields into Little League rec fields, it's like practicing on a seven-foot basketball goal to play on a regular, you know, 10-foot goal. I mean, that's basically what you've done. And you've also put us at a disadvantage. We have one field now, if you tear this field out, to serve seventh, eighth grade middle school, JV squad, and varsity squad. And so trying to schedule games to play a full season on one field and try to practice, I just don't see how we're going to be able to do it if this field's torn down. Now, I did have some conversations with you, Mr. Irwin, it's been a few months ago. You talked about wanting to put two fields at Davis Field. Now, I was under the understanding that we were going to be on the other side of the fence of that field. I'd had no idea you were talking about tearing down what's been established there many, many years and has served us well because I just, I don't understand the reasoning behind you're going to pick up one more field for recreation. I mean, you've got Glade School, you've got Piney Creek School, you've got a field down in Sparta, we have this field. There's lots of areas in the county, even that Piney Creek could add another field, back-to-back or face-to-face. I don't know if it's because of practice purposes or if it's because of playing purposes, but, you know, we developed an MOU back in, a little after December 2018, when Mike James was county manager here. And, you know, that MOU was developed when the schools in the county to allow the use of the school's facilities by the county. Davis Field, middle school baseball practicing games, February through May, high school soccer practice, August through November, middle school soccer practice, August through November, county activities, Tar Hill Baseball, April through June, Tar Hill Softball, April through June, Coach Pitch, Youth Baseball and Softball Games, June through August, T-ball games, June through August. Now, we've had a really good partnership. The county using our facilities with the rec department, but you're really putting the school system in a bind if you take this field and get rid of this field, you know? I mean, we, basketball gyms are used. I could say, I don't understand why we're tearing down a field that if we have to replace it as a school system to find somewhere for our middle school to practice and play, we're going to have to spend up to $100,000 or more. The lighting system is already there, you know? And again, the bathroom, restroom systems, that's there. That's, you know, not that I don't want to share that with the rec department, but technically it's our property that you're taking away from us, you know? And we haven't entered into any kind of deed agreement or anything with that, so. Really, we'd like to know the process and where the conversations have been that we haven't had up to this point before we go any farther, so.
Open the floor to discussion here. Commissioner Evans.
The, creating the two fields, that would make two that are roughly 200-foot outfield with a 20 or 25-foot barrier between the two fields. But you're saying you need a 275-foot field?
For a regulation field, not truly at a regulation field, but for middle, for middle school baseball, you'd need at least down the lines, 225 in center field, around 275.
275, but also that length can be determined by the height of the outfield fence.
Not necessarily.
If you have a fence that's higher, it makes a home run harder to hit than the 275 with, what, a three-foot fence.
You're talking about building a?
No, I'm just asking that question.
Most fence heights for baseball are 10 feet. It's 10 feet.
Now, you still have Jarrett Field that you can use all the time, or the county can use it all the time.
We've got that agreement, that the county uses Jarrett Field, that's correct.
We can use the Jarrett Field for practice and for games. Is that what you're saying?
You can use it if you need to use it. That's never, that's never been, that's never come before us to be asked for that, you know? You've got to also remember that Jarrett Field has a grass infield. And so when you start taking in high school, middle school, or 90-foot bases, pitching mound is 60 feet, six inches, and you put a little league field onto that, then you, real quickly, you start wearing out the grass and tearing up the grass if you, or start playing little league games on those.
It is a usable field that the community can use.
It has been used by the community, yes, sir.
And we could also, the community could also use the football fields to create a couple of baseball fields on.
Use the base, create baseball fields on the football field? Now, why would you want to do that?
Well, if we're looking for more space and you don't want us to use this space, we have to have some space for these other teams to play.
My understanding, you've got space in behind all of this brown area right here as well. I think that's owned by the county as well, I may be wrong, but.
There's a lot of land back in there.
Yes, it is.
And the reason Davis Field is there is when the new gym was built, there was a deal struck with Vanoy's. That dirt, that's how they leveled that field out to take it down to the gym, to make that gym, use that field dirt to build up for the gym. That's how that field came about. There is, like where that star is going around and around, we could go that way, but the expense, that was the main thing that they were looking at. I think they were creating two fields for the, I guess, the kids up to eighth grade or whatever that grade is.
Eighth grade can't play on the 200-foot fence.
I just want to be clear that we can, the recreation department can use Jarrett Baseball Field for their practice field or to play games on, or if they need to, they can also use the football field to create two fields down, or one field down there.
I don't know where you're talking about on the football field. Where you going to create?
On the practice field.
On the field.
You're talking on the field, practice on the field? That's not feasible to do that, Mr. Irwin.
Well, I'm just saying, that's an option, it could be, whether it's feasible for the school system or not.
That wouldn't be an option, no, sir. Not for the football field.
Ed, what's your recommendation for the situation we're in?
Well.
If we care, you need more fields, you know?
We, I mean, we do. So my first question is, what kind of feasibility study have you done, looking at the fields throughout the county? At Piney Creek, at Glade Creek, those areas? Have y'all, I mean, has there been a study done on those as far as how you can upgrade or improve those, or?
You can address that, please.
I'm going to start with saying I'm not trying to hurt the school system. The reason we started this is, and I looked at my numbers, I had 166 kids sign up for baseball last year with a total of 14 teams. And, I mean, I want to help the school system as much as they, I mean, we're in this together. We're a small county, we don't have the funds or the facilities to do anything alone. But we have one field to serve 14 teams, and Lady Trojan Field has got a padlock on it most of the times. And we can use Jarrett by them saying that, but we can't use it for games because of, the mound is built in, it's not at the right distance for us to use the base, it would put the bases on their grass, it would just do more damage to the field and it wouldn't be safe for our kids because of the built-in mound, and it's just, it's not usable. There was a field behind Sparta School Gym that if, it's now a soccer field. I just feel like we should have had this conversation before we started this because we could use, they're welcome to use our soccer fields at Veterans Park, we have four. And we're trying to play 14 teams on one baseball field, which is just not, and it gets kids discouraged if they can only have practice once a week or anything like that because we don't have the facilities. And also, we don't have the buses to transport kids to Glade Creek or Piney Creek or anything of that nature because, I mean, we just don't have that. We're the county, it's on the parents to take their kids wherever we have practice and games. And also, we don't have access to any of the restrooms at either of the schools. So using the schools is, you're asking 100, you know, 166 kids to either drive to Glade or drive to Piney to practice or play, and a lot of parents just won't do that. So if we don't have a place for our kids to practice, then it's going to be our program that is hurting from it. And I don't know if the, I know the one field behind Sparta School Gym, they're working on making a softball field right now that was the practice field for, we used it some for T-ball and Coach's Pitch, but now they're going to use it for middle school softball. So there's just an issue, is the bottom line. We don't, we don't have enough field space to serve all of our kids. And the answer, I'm not certain what the answer is, but we do have facilities that we would be willing to use with them as well, being the soccer fields at Veterans Park.
Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
Why do you not have access to Lady Trojan Field?
We do, we are allowed to use it. And, but last year, middle school, correct me if I'm wrong, middle school, JV and high school all played their games on Lady Trojan Field. So us trying to find a time to practice or play, there was somebody on the field every day. And so for our 11, nine and 10 and 11 and 12-year-olds, our practice is either, you know, after the high school is finished or things of that nature, middle school had a game, or high school had a game. So us being able to use Lady Trojan, and the couple of times we did, there was a, I rate parent that had put some money into the field saying that we had hammered into the, some kind of brick dust and things like that. And we just don't want any confrontation from anything, just trying to utilize the space, but it's just.
So we have lost access?
We haven't, we haven't lost access. We did use it quite a bit last year after the.
We've lost availability.
Yes, just for, I mean, they did play.
Jarrett Field is out of the question because of the designs?
Yes.
We have 166 kids last year.
Yes, sir.
Wanted to play. County is in the situation where we need to provide recreational facilities.
Any of those 166 were T-ball and Coach's Pitch. And when you're putting five-year-olds on Davis Field, that's a humongous field for five-year-olds to try and be playing on. If it's two fields somewhere else that are smaller, or whatever the answer may be, it's just, we need a field, we need another field, and especially for our little ones, because when you're trying to, we had 90 children, which ended up being eight teams, for just T-ball and Coach's Pitch. So we were playing back-to-back games, and you know, they're five and six years old, so sometimes their games were not over until 8 o'clock at night, and, which is fine because it's mostly in the summer, but it's just the availability of the other facilities that we normally partner with, we're just, we're at a lack of fields across the board for us and the school system. But for us to use Glade or Piney Creek is just not, not.
It's not convenient to the parents.
We're really, even I deal with restroom situations and things like that, we just, we've utilized the gyms for practice a couple of times for basketball and things like that at Glade and Piney, because you're inside and can use the restrooms and things like that. But for the baseball and softball, we don't have any outdoor facilities.
You mentioned the soccer fields being constructed?
Yes, there was a field behind Sparta School Gym that we, it's where I used to play rec ball, I don't know.
Well, I played there also.
But it's, they have changed it to, it is now a soccer field. And the smaller field behind it that they used as a practice field is now under construction to be a softball. Because we did play a couple T-ball and Coach's Pitch things on there because it was a much smaller field, but.
If I'm not mistaken, the smaller field was constructed by the county. It is a smaller field, but due to the fact, as Megan said, there's three teams trying to play on the Trojan softball field, so there is a group of parents who have donated money and is extending the fence that will allow them to play some middle school games because last year, the middle school only got to play about half of their season because of rain and flood issues as well.
To me, first, I don't think we can make changes to somebody else's property. I think we probably did that in error. I think we need more communication. I think we need the school and the parks and recs to sit down together, figure out, is there a solution? And work both, both, you know, we're trying to meet the needs of the parents, and I'm sure y'all do the same thing. But I don't think we can move your fences and do things that are your property without your approval and permission.
Irwin, what's the size of the softball field down at Sparta School? What's the outfield?
I'm not, and I just.
Actually, we're, actually, we're backing the fence up to where it'd be at least a 200-foot fence for the girls' softball.
200?
Yeah, we're backing, they're backing it up so we can get 200 feet out of it.
Is that line through that, is that what's county and school as well?
Both are my schools. If I'm not mistaken.
Size of Allegheny County, we can't afford to have our own recreational facilities like the big counties. We've got to work with the school system. The school system's got to work with us. And I think they have hand in fist over the last few years. There has to be a way to work this out somehow that the kids, the young baseball, softball players can have another field to play on, whether, you know, I, you know, if you've got plenty of money, you can do anything, you know? And I'm just looking at, going back to the Davis Field, what Josh's possible recommendations or cost would be, like you said, to dig out more of that bank in the back of the field to make it, I don't know if both fields need to be 275 or 1, little kids and.
I wanted to survey to see, you know, if we could build up dirt on one side. I mean, we had had conversation, Josh, myself, Zach Bennett, had looked at.
Back to Davis Field.
Different options, trying to build up, because that mountain, also the disc golf course is back there now. So you've got, you've got baskets and you've got things back there now, but also the side, we were looking at moving some of the dirt where the trees were, to try and make more parking, to build up the backside of the field, to have one 275 and one 200-foot field so that it would still be middle school reg. to have one 275 and one 200-foot field, so that it would still be middle school regulation. And we would just add one more that would fit the need for our little league. We had looked at doing that. That's not been done yet, but we had had the conversation about getting it surveyed to see exactly what all we could do and trying to put the footage.
Well, our option is moving this away, toward where...
Would have been the other...
They all feel properly lined.
I'm not telling you to stay out, but it's, but it's, you know, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm not a surveyor. I haven't surveyed land. I think, I think a survey needs to be done on this land.
I agree.
I think you need to get an engineer with a technical drawing to come in and look at that, make sure it's feasible to do. You know, and you talked about moving that dirt down there, and that's the new gym. You know, the original plans was at that school to have classrooms underneath that, and they didn't have anywhere to put the dirt. And so, worked out a deal which made the gym smaller, because it's, it just shrunk everything down. I wasn't around when, when those deals went down, but, you know, I think there's lots of places in this county that, that the dirt could be moved to. I don't know, but I don't know the cost of that. I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not a construction guy, but...
Keith Beeson.
I'd like to hear it, Josh.
I should address this?
I've heard this conversation, and if you go back down to those fields below the school bus garage, if you've got two extra 200-foot fences there, seventh and eighth grade JV and varsity softball's already playing and practicing Almighty Trojan. Allegheny County still made two, can utilize at Davis Field below the school bus garage.
Right here to the left, Josh.
We'll have plenty of dirt. What causes this not getting to a 300-foot fence for seventh and eighth grade baseball?
Who's gonna pay for the cost of moving those lights from Davis Field down there? Who's gonna pay for the cost of fixing the dugouts and putting the fencing in? Because right now, the fencing, at the end of that, the end of that right field down there, it's a sinkhole, and the whole fence is sunk in down there. And it to the end of the parking lot down there, it's a parking lot. There are no, no ways to expand down there. So, basically, you gotta redo the whole field there. Yes, sir. They sure do, in early in the year when time has changed.
Certainly want to work together, try to work things out.
Sure.
I do think we need to get a survey done, and pursue this and see where the line is and...
Well, Mr. Chairman, you know, I'm a, I'm a little bit confused. Been too long ago, we had the school in here asking for $750,000 to modify the track. Now, there's a little give and take. Right now, I'm beginning to get the feeling that the county is gonna do all the giving and none of the taking. We have a need. Granted, some people may have donated some money up there for a field. Also pay county taxes. We can go find a field. Maybe we can set up a bus service, so that we can go to the various fields. We're either gonna work this out, or somebody's gonna take it in the shorts.
More discussion on this?
I still don't understand, though. It's okay for them to travel, practice basketball at Piney and Glade, but it's not okay to practice at those fields. And, you know, that, there is, there are porta-johns available at a couple of fields.
I've had the same question. I mean, it's the same mile from Sparta back to Piney Creek as it is vice versa. And we do have two fields out there, Glade and Piney, and facilities is the problem. But like you said, now there is porta-johns and stuff you can rent to, to put out there and use it.
Also, when I split up the basketball teams last year, I tried to look at everyone's address. I had one coach that actually lived out in Glade Creek. I had one that lived out in Piney Creek. And I tried to put as many of the children that lived in one place or the other for practices on those teams with the coaches in those facilities. But, with baseball and softball, you know, 11 and 12-year-olds, we only had one team. But, with only having one team for 11 and 12-year-old softball and baseball, all the parents are driving to various locations for everything. And when we tried to do the games here this year, same boat as Mr. Beasley, a lot of our games were canceled, or we ended up driving to Ash Family Central, just because they had a field available that night and we didn't. So, it's, it's just an issue for everyone all the way around as far as needing other location.
True.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, so what we're looking at is possibly doing a survey at Davis Field to see what it would take to create two fields that the high school would be happy with, the rec department would be happy with, with possibly being able to take that dirt and dump it someplace else to increase another field. And between school system and the rec department and the maintenance, it looks to me like that y'all could come to some kind of agreement that's gonna help the kids in the county. That, that's what we're all for.
That's what we want.
We, we just gave away 20-some thousand dollars more to help 56 kids. We can take that 20-some thousand dollars...
Move some dirt.
According to Karen, we've got plenty of money. Take that, get a survey done, find out where we can build these fields, and then go from there. But, we don't have all day. If we're trying to get this set up for this year, we may need to move as fast as we can.
I should address, I'm Noah, Noah Line. I'm the Allegheny County Schools Athletic Director and Athletic Director at High School. I don't think any of us are saying, nobody can use our, any field. We're not, we're not saying that at all. I think the biggest thing for us was, you know, we, we did this MOU late December, about this time a year ago, sometime around in there. We knew that Davis Field was gonna be used. It was our understanding Davis Field was gonna be used for middle school baseball season. You're talking about access for Lady Trojan Field. You know, we do padlock it and close it down a little bit while the softball team is playing on it, you know, during softball season. But then, you know, we opened both those fields back up, and, you know, we actually try to, you know, we do use high school money and school money on trying to maintain all the fields. So, I don't think, it, it's not a, it's not really a question here, you know, nobody can use what. We're willing to work. That's what we want. We just didn't, all of a sudden, you know, it's getting to be mid-December. Two months from now, we're starting baseball, and all of a sudden, the fence is being taken down. We didn't know anything about it. So, the, the thing with us is, we just wanted to make sure today, you know, can we still, because if we can't play middle school baseball, that's gonna decimate, you know, we're telling every seventh and eighth grader in our county that we can't play middle school baseball. That's gonna end up decimating our high school baseball program. Three teams can't practice on that high school baseball field. Now, somebody's gonna have to be coming in to practice at 6 o'clock in late February, first of March. So, you know, right now, you know, we, we got two months, but we need that, you know, middle school baseball field at Davis Field currently. And then, you know, when the season's over, we'll help, do anything we need to on looking at helping with the...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know, I can understand that, but you've also got to realize, three of us on this committee, whenever we were in the school in Allegheny County, we played baseball. There wasn't any soccer. But it was on the same field. It was one field, Jarrett Field. That was a football field. That was a baseball field. Remember Willard Boxley complaining all the time that whenever he played football, he was covered in scabs, because it was a field that never grew any dang-gone grass? Now, the county's got a problem. We have interest in our softball, our, our little league baseball, and we are trying to solve this dang-gone thing. Now, I'm sorry that we upset you because we pulled down the fence, but you also got to look at the up people we've had in the county administration in the last three, well, since June, July the 23rd. So, we were a little bit remiss right there. We were caught between the cracks. We'll do everything that we can to earn lemonade out of lemons, but he's fair with us.
We did update our MOU, Mr. Beasley's, and I had one that I believe Mr. Evans topped up. And it does still, it does still, it's pretty much the same, middle, Scott Middle School and everything. But there is an updated one that I will get to you all, just so that you have the latest version of that.
Mr. Chairman, that, and the updated was just to, I think, reference the parking that, that the people wanted to address the challenges they had up there. This time, I think we all realize we have a, a challenge, and we need to reach a mutual agreement. And I, I don't, I'm not real sure, but I think maybe a, a motion to, to freeze the current project until we can, the survey in place and, and have the conversation mutually. So, reach some kind of an agreement that we can all live with. Would that be correct at this time with the board?
I think that's a good idea. Commissioner Irvin wants to comment.
I, I just want to be sure that maintenance is in on this from the very beginning. But, if, if we're gonna go with this motion, I would like for it to have a timeframe, that I would like the survey done in next number of weeks or whatever. Because if we keep putting this thing off, then this next year is totally lost. There, there is a short timeframe to do this. I don't have any idea what a budget, what, what you're gonna need for a survey, but are we gonna approve the survey and let, and let Josh find out, whatever the price may be? While we're doing it, do we want to look at just one field? Or do we want to look at all the options while we're having the survey done? Of maybe going out further, out first baseline and using some of that field dirt to come in and make that an even bigger field? Let's just don't think in the short term. Let's think in the long term. Because when these youngsters start playing baseball, softball, that's your minor league when they get up to high school. So, they need to play and practice as much as they can, because that makes the high school teams that much better. People in this county complain there's nothing for the young people to do. And I think we're trying to expand and make that happen by creating some more fields. But I, I just don't want to look at the small part. I would like for it to look at, encompass maybe looking at two or three different options with one field, maybe two fields, maybe three fields.
I agree with that, but I think we need to get, probably the first step would be to get a survey done and, and see what we got to work with and make a determination at that point, and...
I was gonna say, I, I think they, I think really the first step would be for the, all the parties to have a conversation and figure out what the possibilities are to determine what maybe needs to be surveyed.
Re-estate, restate your motion there.
Freeze the current project and allow the parties time to have a conversation? What direction we need to go so that we have a mutual agreement?
What are we gonna do about a survey? Are we doing a survey or not?
They need to determine what they're gonna survey, what they need to survey.
We need to figure out first, can you pull it back up one more time, Drew?
What's the purpose in, if I may, Mr. Chairman, what's the purpose in freezing the project? See, that's stopping everything. I think instead of freezing the project, the next step ought to be a discussion between recreation, maintenance, and the school system to get a survey done.
I think if we can figure out how far out this fence is gonna come out here, how much lane you have out past it.
That's, I think that's, would be a look at where the, the field could be. I, I think there's lots of room that doesn't have timber on it out there, past that fence. And you can back both of those fences back, back to back. But I don't know. There again, I mean, that's...
Will this be a help to the school system if we can...
100%.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. It'd be a help to us and to the rec center, both, both.
Think you could approach your board in paying for half of the survey and us paying half of it?
I think we need to figure out first how much room we got out there, pulling the plot up, and then we'll, we'll look at the survey.
Do you think you could approach your board into possibly helping us with the survey cost?
No problem. Can always ask them.
But I'm, I'm against freezing the project. To me, when you say freezing it, you're stopping the project.
Just no more demolition.
That, that's what I meant when I say that, is...
There's no demolition till we get a survey. We gotta, we gotta know what we've got to deal with here first.
Are you gonna start tearing the grass out of the, are you gonna start tearing the grass out of the...
It's part of the project.
Y'all gonna tear the dugouts down and all that fencing as well? That's, that's my question.
I think that's part of stopping what Mark, and I'll second Mark's motion. I don't believe we had any discussion about that. I mean, we said we weren't gonna tear anything down. As I, in my memory...
We said, we didn't communicate to them.
Well, we thought, we thought it was our property.
That's true. That's true. This is just some miscommunication, misunderstanding.
Well, we also, we also didn't realize that the partum grant prevented us from doing certain things also.
That's true.
If I may, another thing is when Josh cuts these poplar trees down, create a parking space in there, we're gonna have to have more parking if we're having another field. That's a big problem. There's some dirt that could be moved from there, either to increase in the field or going down to Sparta School. That dirt could be hauled down there. I don't know how many truckloads it would be, but you gotta start someplace.
That was what we had talked to Zach Bennett, the high school baseball coach, about, was using some of the dirt underneath those trees to expand where the bank is, to hopefully give us more room so that we could fit the regulation size for middle school. And then one would be the smaller field that would revolve the needs of coaches pitch and tee ball.
I think we need to allow the school, parks and rec and maintenance to figure this out.
We got a motion and a second on the floor to, whether to take this out and to freeze it for the time being till we can... And I would like to add to that, to go ahead and get a survey done.
Absolutely.
Because we're...
Who made the motion?
We're still freezing the project.
Yeah, just to we get a survey done till we, till we...
Okay, then put, put that in there that the survey's gonna be done.
Yeah, yeah. We want to go ahead, Josh, we're gonna...
And hopefully, the school system will pay, go 50-50 on the survey.
To the board.
Do a, a necessary survey.
We got a motion to add the survey to the, to the...
...by the...
For a second. Union for the discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank y'all.
We'll be back in touch.
Appreciate you hearing from us today. I'll, I'll touch base with Megan and we'll...
Thank you for...
And we'll, we'll get, we'll get together real quick so we can...
Josh, wait a minute. And what, what's our timetable? Are we telling Josh to go ahead and get started now?
We just had that in the vote, that he can, he can go ahead, get a survey.
Go ahead.
And it's possible.
Go sit, get something surveyed.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we take a 10-minute recess for the removal and expansion of bodily fluids.
We already passed a consent, didn't we already pass that consent or... We're gonna do it in order.
Casey, are you getting up to speed for your run?
We'll pick up at our meeting right here. Start in the consent agenda.
Chairman, I have no questions or concerns on the consent agenda, sir.
The motion's accept.
We'll make it so moved.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Move it on up to public comment. See you then, move into the interim county manager's job. Comments?
If you will, just look over the November building permit report. Our mid-month meeting in January, we discussed that it falls on the 20th, that that is a holiday, so we just need to formally change that to Tuesday, the 21st.
Need a motion on that, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Make a motion that we move the mid-month county meeting for the month of January, January in the year of our Lord to Tuesday, January the 21st. Year of our Lord, 2020.
Second that.
Got a motion and a second to change the date.
Move it to the 21st?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
21st of January.
It's a Tuesday. What's our first meeting going to be in January?
6th.
We'll still have that?
Yes.
And why are we moving it to the 21st?
The 20th is a holiday.
All day, every time you turn around. My cows don't know that holiday. That's fine, that's me.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
We also need to set a date for our workshop and decide who, well, we can decide who and what to address at the workshop later, but just any dates if you want to start throwing out.
Workshop to consist of the fairgrounds?
Board appointments, I think they're, the fairgrounds was something that needed to be addressed at the workshop as well.
I think the fairgrounds is going to take four or five hours at least.
I am occupied with gunny claws until Friday of this week.
Okay. We also need to decide, I guess, if we'd like to wait until the new county manager comes or if we, well, I guess we need to address those board appointments before.
I'd say we need the workshop to get us started as soon as we can.
Okay.
What about January, or December the 30th? You're back in town?
I'm finished Friday. It will be non-beard Saturday morning.
Monday, December 30th?
Monday, December the 30th is good for me, as far as I can tell.
I think it'd be good to have the new county manager on board to do that.
Understood. Now, who's going to be invited to the, to that work session concerning the fairgrounds?
That's open to whoever we'd like to invite.
Fairgrounds Commission.
Think obviously the fairgrounds committee, the commissioners. Is Josh Green on the fairgrounds? He certainly has to be there.
Megan Edwards.
She's on that committee, isn't she? On the fairgrounds?
She is.
Anybody from Soil and Water need to be there? Talk about the flood plains, um...
Be good, be good.
What you found out last week.
We'll, we'll ask Maggie, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I really think it would be a shame to have this, all these folks, just next to the management. They think it was valuable, say it until it can happen.
I think that he could read the minutes. Drew draws up great minutes. He ought to be able to call it up, get caught up. If we're going to go with that theory, we should have waited on the community in schools. We should have waited on half a dozen other things. We just can't sit around and wait for the county manager to get here. That process has been going on for six, seven, eight months. I don't know how long it's been so long since I forgot.
I could also ask him if he'd be interested in coming.
Invite him if he wants to attend, that would be great.
Is he still, is he still employed over there at that date?
As I know.
Okay, okay. I would entertain that, asking him to come too, and...
That's a good suggestion. Do you think of anybody else for the fairgrounds?
I would assume Aaron Ray would have a list of folks that he would want to come from the committee. Sort of heads that committee, right? Fairgrounds Committee.
What time?
Early.
Nine.
Early.
Start here or start at the fairgrounds?
On the weather.
Meet at the fairgrounds?
I don't know, the weather could be bad, let's, let's start at nine o'clock, and then we'll see what the weather is, if we can go, if we can move, whatever.
I think part of the, part of the fairgrounds ought to be a tour of everything, including the firefighting facilities, all the way, what land is owned. The town, we need to get into discussion with the town. They own a little section right in the middle of the fairgrounds. Understanding that they would be willing to possibly donate that back to the county because the county gave it to them to start with for a will. That will has been abandoned. I think that was the worst will they had for minerals.
I can ask Brian if he'd be able to attend?
If he wants to, but...
I concur with Mark. I think we hired a county manager based on his experience and what he could add and his expertise. And for us to do a planning session, you know, a week or two weeks before he gets here to me is stupid.
I believe that is a very good comment. Two weeks is going to break us.
I think if he's invited, he's been over here numerous times. It's a good time for him to meet a lot of local people, a lot of people that are involved in things. I would make the motion that we have the meeting on the 30th to start roughly at nine o'clock and to invite Mr. Carter.
Okay. I'll get in touch with him after the meeting today and let you guys know what he says.
See how the vote goes first.
We'll leave a second on Bobby's motion to invite Mr. Carter over for the, for the December the 30th meeting, work session. Turned down, motion fails.
Done.
Motion, your motion failed for the lack of a second.
I make a motion, we schedule a meeting based on the availability of the new county manager.
Second.
The motion is second to set a date for the new county manager to be here within, in turn with our workshop.
For the same day?
Nope.
No date.
Different date.
Based on his availability.
Be sometime after the 13th, anywhere it comes. Got a motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. opposed?
Very much so.
4-1.
For the record, very much so.
I did have a couple more things. Daniel Broton, Wendy, and I have a meeting with Jessica Wellburn and Phil True from the High Country Council of Governments. They have the fire districts ready. That will be on January 6th, that morning. We have a meeting that evening. And I talked to John before the meeting. I think the next thing, if you agree, is to take those districts to the next fire commission meeting. I'm happy to share those with you that day.
They've got to go to each volunteer fire department and be presented with a public hearing, if I remember correctly. So, it's logical that we would start with the fire commission so that we could get a schedule worked up. And the fire commission meeting would be, be fourth Tuesday in January. And I anticipate starting volunteer fire departments, I would hope if the board concurs as quickly as possible. Because I would like to see a vote on this by first of April.
Okay. And Sherry also asked me to let everybody know that filing ends on Friday at noon. That's a hard stop at noon on Friday if there are... If there are 10 people waiting and they don't get everything in the computer, it stops at noon. So, if you're thinking about filing, please, Friday.
Mary?
Go ahead.
A Russian's involved in it.
Moving on to county commissioner comments. Mr. Mark Evans.
Yeah, I just, I won't belabor these long. These are just some areas of, I wanted to get on the agenda because I know, you know, the county manager coming, will look back at the last few of the meetings. These are just some areas that we've talked about, I think, in our, we had a workshop talking about our purchasing department agency and some of the needs there and, and some concerns with finance officer. And also, we've talked about the facility security needs here, and it's been implemented partly. There's still some more work to do, but this board, I think, needs to hear from and probably through the next manager from the board of elections on their needs and challenges with hardening up the building a little more. And so, I think there's, there's a need and opportunity for a little bit more training, safety training and building training and things for our staff, for HR and emergency management, I think, to work together. And I know they've been talking on some of that. Also, for our, all of our employees to, to have any reimbursements to be approved before any of those transactions, our expenses are rendered or made. As I said, I know I'm not stating this for any action or anything, I just wanted to get it on the agenda so that hopefully it wouldn't fall through the cracks whenever Mr. Carter gets here to, you know, he does his own assessment to see what areas of opportunity or low-hanging fruit there may be to, to help us out going forward in some of those areas. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Next on the agenda is request for a closed session concerning legal.
What about comments from other commissioners?
Yes, I'm sorry, that was confusing. I put Mark's thoughts down. He had emailed those over to me, so that's why I put those on the agenda. I apologize.
Go ahead with this request, or I need to back up.
I think back up and just finish commissioner comments.
Let's, let's back up and get back with the commissioner comments with, with Commissioner John Evans.
One thing, if we're going to be so formalized, I think that we need to look into getting a light system where if a commissioner wants to speak, we can flip the switch, let the chair know that we have questions. And it would also encompass a light giving us a time limit on our verbocity. Other than that, sir, I have no further comment. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Irvin?
Commissioner Larry Prince. Peace on earth and goodwill to all people. And I think we've had some healthy discussions, a lot of discussions today, but I'm encouraged by what I see us being able to do. And I just wish our citizens a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and hope that we do the things that are, they're good. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Obviously, very Merry Christmas to everybody and all the board and board members, county employees, all the young kids that are going to be out of school pretty soon. Hope everyone has a Merry Christmas. On John's request on the microphone, we can get a microphone that you just touched and the red light comes on. That, just replace these. I don't think it's very expensive, and it would save a lot of confusion and help the chairman trying to, trying to figure out who's asking for what. Think we've got gobs of money from what Karen said. We're giving it away left and right, so new microphone system would be something easy to, easy to pay for. The county's apparently running over with money now. Where were we on the property sale? Was that the end of the week?
We actually did receive an upset bid on Friday, so it'll be published in the paper Wednesday. And then that upset bid ends following Friday, the 27th.
Who did the upset bid come from?
Bottom lease.
Okay. And it was 5%?
It's 20... It's 21 to, or 21.6 was their bid.
All right, we got a bidding war going.
So this thing could keep going on and on and on.
It could.
Just a comment on the community and schools, obviously, I support that. I think that's something that the community ought to support. I don't think that's a burden for the taxpayers. Their salary is $168,000 for four employees. I think the school system could have had, they could have hired several teachers for that $168,000. Again, I think the community showed that they were supporting it and they would continue to support it. I just hate spending county money, even though we've got plenty of it according to finance. That's all.
Just like to say Merry Christmas to everybody, the employees of the county and department heads, and you guys are the ones that make our job a lot easier and make us shine a little more. Wish them for everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And we'd like to thank Sheriff Maynes for his first annual run for claws. And I understand there at Piney Creek School today, asking out presents and have done Dunn Lake Creek and a huge success and a lot of smiles out there. And that's that's a good thing, great, great thing. Thank all his people and his backup. All ahead. We need to, we need to take up this closed session. We need to make a motion.
Make a motion that we table the closed session until council is available at the next monthly meeting.
I second that.
Motion second and discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Push it to adjourn.
Second.
Till next year.
Till next year.
Third.